All right, being that it's past seven, I would like to call the Tuesday, December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting of the Woburn Planning Board to order, please. Karen, could you call the roll?
Bob Dougherty.
Here.
Jim Callahan.
Here.
Kevin Donovan.
Yeah.
Dave Edmonds.
Yeah.
Carolyn Turner. Mike Ventreska.
Yeah.
Chair Claudia Bogan.
Here. All right, the first item on the agenda, I see we have no subdivision approval not required plan, so I'm going straight to subdivisions. The first one on the agenda is Carlson Way expiration of construction completion date and petitioner is Brian Mulanston.
Uh, yes, Mark, if you could, could you put yourself on mute?
Sure.
Uh, I actually hold on one second. Um, I don't want to ask you to do that. My apologies. I wondered if we could take uh the matters out of order, only that I think the the next one on the agenda is potentially much briefer than the first one. So I didn't want to give Mr. Gately the uh with the chair, if the chair was amenable and the board was to maybe flip the order of the items to take flag first.
Sure, I I don't have a problem with that if Mark is all right with it.
Yes.
All right, so um to put Carlson Way aside for the moment, uh I will go to twenty-four Flag Street expiration of construction completion date. George Gately is the petitioner.
All right, and just to remind the board members to summarize, uh we had a discussion at our last meeting uh that we uh continued to this evening. Uh, at we were asked to grant an extension of the completion date for a year to next December, and the board discussed uh the items that remained uh unfinished at this time. There is a bond in place to cover that amount, but in a previous communication, the engineering department had expressed some concern that the bond might not now adequately cover the cost of construction. So the board asked uh or agreed at the last meeting that's actually planning staff would have engineering update the cost estimate. Uh, Mr. Gately was very responsive, called engineering the very next morning, and the engineering department uh very appropriately, I guess, said that it was really up to Mr. Gately to provide a cost estimate through his engineer and that the engineering department would then review it to ensure that they concurred. And Mr. Gately agreed to do that. His engineer did provide a cost estimate that was reviewed by the engineering department, and it was off by about three thousand dollars. The difference wasn't necessarily with respect to any particular item. You could really boil it down to a difference in the amount of contingency, both of um the private engineer's number and the number that Mr. Rayom calculated had contingencies of between eight percent on the private side and fifty percent in uh the case of the engineering. Long story short, um it's not a huge number, and it can be explained away by only a part of the contingency. So the engineering department recommended that we consider the engineering department recommended that the board consider um uh excuse me, I lost my place. Maybe uh leaving the amount of bond as it is now in the current amount and having Mr. Gately recalculate, have his engineer recalculate the number in about six months to see uh to do a second review then as to the adequacy. Like the presumption would be that if in six months we found that the new numbers that are being used by Mass DOT, which kind of are the bases for our numbers, if they were to increase, perhaps um you know, the amount might need to increase at that point, but the recommendation would be to put that question in advance for six months. I asked Mr. Gately if he'd be agreeable to doing that if the board decided to take that route, and he said that he was, and I I know that he's here in the audience tonight uh and may have something to add to that.
Well, no, that's fine. Good.
George, I recognize I recognize your voice. Do you have anything to add to what Tina said?
I know uh that's fine. That's all good. Yeah, we can add, look at it again in six months. I'll be building up there by then anyway, you know?
Great. Oh, that I think everybody would be delighted. All right, so um with regard to what is before us, Tina, what is before us is an extension of the construction completion date. The current idea on the table is to extend that until a date certain in June.
It could it could either be June, which is the six-month mark uh that would coincide with the recalculation, or the developer's request was for twelve months to December of next year. And I guess what that if you did do the December date, it would mean that he would have to agree on the recalculation in June, you know, and on the condition that he would post any difference if the board in fact found that additional money should be posted.
All right, so that is the recommendation. Is there um any discussion or a motion by the board members as to what to do with this?
Like to make a motion to give the extension of twelve months to December first twenty twenty-three, leave the bond amount at forty-four thousand dollars.
And Jim, does your motion have anything uh to say with regard to a bond recalculation?
None.
Okay, that is the motion on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Carolyn. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I would call for a vote. Uh Karen, could you conduct a roll call vote, please?
Bob Dougherty.
Aye.
Jim Callahan.
Aye.
Kevin Donovan.
Aye.
Dave Edmonds.
Aye.
Carolyn Turner.
Aye.
Mike Ventreska.
Aye.
And Chair Claudia Bogan.
I that's seven in favor, none opposed. Mr. Gately, good luck. All right, so onwards to Carlson Way subdivisions expiration of construction completion date. Brian Mulanston is the petitioner.
Uh, yes, uh Madam Chairman and members of the board, uh we have a couple of folks in the audience uh representing not only uh the developer, but also on a butter who's involved in uh the current, some of the current issues. Couple of things, um in April of this year, we last saw uh the developer, and at that time, there were a number of items remaining to be completed. Uh, they've been outstanding for some time, but over time, uh Mr. um Alonson had in fact completed certain items. After April, they were in April, they appeared before the board and asked for an extension to this uh this month. It uh very comfortable that they could complete the work that would remain to be done at that time. Since then, since April, a couple of things have been completed. One item was completion of a portion of the sidewalk in front of the easement, uh and that in fact has been completed. And the developer has also provided us with a certification from a design engineer that that construction meets the appropriate requirements under code. Uh, it might be appropriate just to take a minute to kind of give everybody a reminder of how we came to be here with a few items remaining. And it only take me a minute, but I found it kind of helpful to cover the ground of how we got here. And that is that the board did require this creation of an easement from Carlson Way to the back of the property line along and on one property owner's land as a condition of approval. And when it came time, uh the developer built a subdivision, gravelled the um the easement, but completed the subdivision without putting up a required a fence and gate around the easement area. And the lot over which the easement runs was subsequently sold to the current, I believe the current owner was the original purchaser. So when the issue of completing the subdivision came up, maybe a year, year and a half ago now, um when we got to the item of the fence, we started to ask questions about what permissions we needed, if any, from the property owner. The city solicitor got involved at my request, and it was determined that the fence and gate requirement was not sufficiently clear in the record and in the documents that would have been available to the property owner for them to have known of this fence requirement, and they were not in fact in favor of the fence. And the city solicitor felt that therefore there was nothing the board could do at this point to compel it. So that started us on a series of discussions with Jay Duran, our public works director, who would be the one using the easement about how or what we might be able to do now given the situation. And his concern was making sure that the easement was well marked so that he knew exactly where to go when he used the easement, not wanting to create any damage to private property or potential liability for the city financially otherwise down the road. So he suggested we got it, we got involved with the uh attorney. Um, Joe Tarby represents the property owner. We pulled him into some of the discussions. We talked about alternatives that maybe could mark the way, including flush mounted stone bounds. The property owner was not in favor of that, but did say that they would be amenable to a planting at the corner of the easement so that there'd at least be a visual mark for DPW and others to use to say, okay, between this side of the easement, which is well marked with um a retaining wall on one side, the planting would be the visual cue on the outer end. And then if that was acceptable, uh the owner or the homeowner would be willing to accept that. It wasn't certainly Mr. Durant's first or second choice, but wanting to salvage something, I think he acquiesced to the idea of a planting. And so right now, we're at the point where we need to figure out what type of planting would go there, and the building inspector is mindful of zoning, and there are issues with the height of the planting, depending on whether it's in the front setback or not. But at any rate, we need to find a planting that would work, um get it okay by the homeowner and then purchased and installed. And that will, I think, solve or at least answer to the best that we can, the marking of the easement. There also needs to be some signage on the street to mark in front of the new area that acts as an apron for DPW trucks to go over and into the easement. There's uh the building inspector is concerned, wants to make sure that that's never used as a parking area in a driveway. There are some zoning issues that get raised. There's a maximum width of driveways for residential properties, and of course, the current driveway is well within the requirements. But if a second driveway type construction goes on this lot, the building inspector does not want to have to count that toward the total driveway width. If he does, and there's a zoning issue, that's not good for the homeowner, and the building inspector wanted to avoid that. So he said if you put up signage that says no parking, they're not going to park there. And that would then require that we go to the traffic commission, get the city to designate a certain distance as no parking, and then um actually purchase the signs and put them up. So that's the steps that are needed now for the signage that remains and the planting, and I think those were the two biggest things or the things that remain undone. Guess the one other thing I would say further is that the building inspector did recommend that the design engineer has given us an as-built of what he's just done for the apron. And the building inspector would like to see that expanded a little bit to incorporate the location of the planting wherever it's going to go so that there's a plan sort of in the file that shows the exact locations of everything and includes a note that says that the apron is not going to be used as a driveway or for any parking. It's truly just for access by the city or its vehicles over the easement. So those are the things that remain undone. Um, it's disappointing certainly that they weren't able to accomplish though all those things as well between, you know, April and now, but they haven't been. So there's a a couple of possibilities, I think at least three on the table. I could cover two, and then I'd like to with the chair's permission turn to Mark Salvati, who I think I believe has at least a third. So there's one option is to say, you're tired of hearing about this. Let's take the bond. Let's tell Tina to take the steps that she just outlined. Get the work done and return any balance to Mr. Malanson, and we won't have to worry about this again. Another option is to give Mr. Malanson another period of time. I guess it would have to be at least six months because all in, you're going to have to do the planting when the spring is there, and then the ASB will have to follow that. So you're looking at probably a six-month extension, I would say, to complete everything that remains and do it the right way and do it well. And that certainly is an option for the board. The third one, as I said, I'd like to turn to um Mr. Salvati, who has a different approach that I think he wants the board to consider.
All right, Mark, if you have um a third suggestion?
Well, it's
Let us know.
My my only other suggestion was because these things were not part of the original subdivision approval, meaning the planting of the shrub or the no parking signs. My position was that it just gets a stipimate of compliance, and we agreed to do them after that. But we are fine with any of the decisions. And was we're even fine with the uh with the planning board taking taking over the project and finishing it, although we would rather have the time if needed.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Um, so I think um we've got a pretty good explanation of uh how we got here. Is there um any board member who would like to jump in and discuss the options in front of us?
Madam Chair.
Mike.
I I have a a question to the planning director, um Tina. Who who would be responsible for maintaining this easement?
So that's, oh, good. I'm sorry. I thought I was on mute. Uh, well, that's a good question. It's gravelled, uh and it was covered by some dirt and and some grass by the property owner at, you know, a later point. But I think a large part of that's been scraped off to my knowledge. So I guess the answer would have to be the city. The city's requiring it, and the gravel is there. And it although it's on someone else's property, yeah, you wouldn't want weeds growing up and having it look unkempt.
I just.
Well, I don't know. Maybe I should, maybe I should ask Attorney Tarby. His client has been maintaining it um till now, but I and I assume that he would not going forward, but maybe I should not do that. Uh with the chair's permission, I'd like to suggest maybe Attorney Tarby might enlighten us.
Certainly. Joe, go right ahead if you have something, something to enlighten us with.
Sure, if you if you've driven by the property, it's, you would not know that there is a access way there or easement there. You know, the Hagertys um maintain the property like we all maintain our lawns. They're certainly not going to allow weeds and everything else to grow up out of there. It's a part of their property, and they're going to maintain it um like they always have maintained.
Okay, thank you. So, Mike, does that answer your question?
It does. It gives me, I mean, to me, I think it's, I I don't know if we're creating more of a problem than it actually is. I mean, obviously, the the easement is the access to have access right of way. And, you know, if they maintain the property and they and the access is still there, you know, I I'd be good with that. I mean, um, and, you know, because I have an easement behind my house, and it's maintained by the the property owner that owns the majority of the land back there, which is fine by me. In there's access for anybody who needs access. I just.
Well, I guess my, I guess, Mike, I don't want to speak for 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 Jay Duran, but I think he'd be thrilled as well. He's got enough to do. And I'm not sure that he would match. He would even come close to matching what the Hagertys would do in terms of, you know, attention. So it really boils down to the the planting and the signage.
Right, and 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 Mark mentioned that he would, um his client, uh as long as, you know, the problem with going that rooted, it does not match the ASB. So how how do we get around that? Is a a um, would that the lease submit plans or were they um, he stated a um a certificate stating it's a a change? Uh, I'm I'm not sure how to how we would handle that.
Well, I believe, and I'd have to check, to be honest with you. I did not check for tonight's meeting to ensure, but I believe that you have previously long ago approved and accepted an ASB plan for the subdivision. So what they have provided us is with an updated sort of, you might call it an inset uh to the ASB plan that shows it was left with a lot without a lot of detail on the approved plan. I did look at the approved plan. There was no curbing that ran along the edge. Uh, so the fact that there is no curbing today along the edge, that doesn't require a change to the ASB. So I'm not really sure there's any change to what you've approved, but what there is now is a an additional plan uh signed by the design engineer that says that it kind of gives the detail, a great detail than what's lacking on the ASB. The ASB typically covers the roadway and the right-of-way. The the planting or something like that would not have been a typical requirement of the ASB. It wasn't even thought of back at the time the ASB was prepared.
All right.
All right, Mike, are you set?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
All right, Jim. Go right ahead. Jim, you're on mute.
I'd like to see what's written in the homeowners association in regards to this common space as part of this development, which is typically covered for maintenance and upkeep.
Uh, it's not common space, Jim. It's actually the easement runs over Mr. Hagerty's house lot. It's not a separate parcel. And there's no, I don't think there's no utilities in it. Uh, it's truly an access easement.
So the easement is clearly defined on the drawings.
Yes.
Within the lot line, correct?
Yes, uh, it runs.
Do we have a copy of that drawing by chance?
Uh, tonight, no. Uh, not 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 immediately, Jim, no.
All right, so the the property owner was aware when he purchased the property that there was an easement and ran through it.
Yes, he did know that. He did know that.
And he also know knew that he couldn't put any permanent fixtures within that that area.
I but I can't say that, but I can say that he, to my knowledge, has put nothing permanent in there.
Right, so.
The issue arose.
He's maintaining his own property. I see no problem then. Doing the way it is, why would the city take it if it's a person's property, although it has an easement across the tract?
No takings, Jim. I'm sorry if there was any confusion. No one is suggesting a taking. What the suggestion, what the work that remains to be done would be um the installation of a planting and some signage uh and the uh augmentation of the most recent plan to include the location of the planting. No one suggesting, the city says, we have the easement. There's no question. The issue was that the homeowner would not agree to a post and rail fence enclosure and gate along the easement. So that's why we're trying to come up with an alternative, and we've gone through a series of possibilities and landed on a planting at one corner, but no takings.
Okay, I misunderstood that. I thought there was an opportunity for the city to maintain it. One for the bond to be rescinded. And the third one was what Mark provided. But that's fine if uh that's fine with me. I understand it clearly.
So it strikes me that there are um two potential main options, which is to give the developer one last opportunity to get these named things done. Um, get the planting approved by the homeowner and in, get the no parking signs approved by the traffic commission and in and get an accurate ASB plan um redone. And the impetus for all of this is, I'm understanding um Jay Duran wants to be sure that his people know when they go in and out of this access that they're on the easement and they're not impacting the homeowner. That's like the point of this. Am I right, Tina?
Correct, a hundred percent.
Okay, and so if that's the point, and it's really the city that has the main interest in making this happen, I guess one potential thing to do if if Tina has essentially weighed the cost and benefits and said, well, if we move to take the bond and we we as the planning board don't have to manage it from someone else doing it for the city's interest, that the city, i.e. Tina and company, right, will do it. Am I right or wrong on that?
You're right.
Okay, so the person with the interest in getting this accomplished is clearly the city um more so than the developer, or at least that's the experience that we as the planning board have had over the last years. We've been doing this a real long time. And so the question, I think, for the board is given that this has come back and come back and come back and been unresolved, and given that Tina is apparently willing at this point to do the heavy lifting in that it's the city's interest that is driving this, that the developer, although might prefer not to have his bond taken, is is, you know, understands the situation. How how would this board like to proceed? Mike?
Yeah, Ma- Madam Chair, I I think um the good point is it needs to be a delineated easement, right? Um, how it's the it's how we get there in the the best and in quickest way to, because, you know, I'm of the mindset, I don't want to see this again in here, you know? So how we go about doing that? I mean, should we put it on the onus of the developer, but that has gotten nowhere. So it it's it's almost coming back to it's just having us, you know, take, take, take the money and get it done. You know, and it doesn't sound like there's that much work to be done.
Well, you can make that in the form of a motion, and we can, we unless there's someone burning to speak, which I don't see, we can see what the board thinks of that.
But I mean, that's just my thought. I I, you know, it just, it seems like we're so close to getting done, but nothing's getting done. You know, it comes backward the same spot every time, and I can understand Tina's frustration with this.
If I may, Madam Chairman, it's Tina. I I also understand a little bit, I think, of the hesitancy because it's a big step. Take a bond. It's not something that any of us would relish doing. And, you know, there's, to the extent that there's some negativity associated with that, you know, certainly um not good and and understandable that it would give discomfort. I I, you know, I suppose I could, you know, reach down in the well of uh patience that I have if the board was more comfortable or felt that it had made its point and wanted to give the developer, you know, another one last six-month continuous to the end of June to complete the remainder of this work. That's more than sufficient. And, you know, I guess if we found ourselves then with work that still remained, then there wouldn't even be a five-minute discussion, I would hope, about taking the bond at that point and just being done with it. If you're more comfortable, I just want you to know that I'm, as a staff, fine with any decision you make, you you know, including one that gives them another six months.
Okay, Tina, thank you.
You're welcome.
Bob, did I see that you wanted to jump in?
No, I was just scratching my head.
No worries.
I was trying to get it to work, you know, it it doesn't seem to be working, it seemed to be working.
Got it. All right. Is there any other board member that wishes to weigh in? Oh, I see. I see Mark with his hand up. Unless there's a board comment, Mark, feel free, go right ahead.
I would ask that we do do the six months and just that would be it. I think you could put it in the record that uh that's the last extension allowed. We wouldn't even come back to the meeting and just allow the bond to be reneged. We don't, we don't want that on the record, although we don't really care that who does the work, because I think the city would get the work done quicker than us. But we will uh agree to uh if you'd give us the six months to go right to the traffic commission and get the shrub approved by the owner and installed.
All right, Mark, thank you.
Yep.
All right, so what is the will of the board?
I will uh this time I
Yep, Bob, did you?
Yeah, I was gonna make a motion, unless Jim.
I'd like to speak before you make the motion, Bob.
Please.
I'm concerned about Attorney Salvati's comment on behalf of uh the applicant. The city can get two signs and a shrub in quicker than the applicant can get there. This project's probably in the seven-year range. And it's frustrated the entire group here. And that's a response we get when we look for a six-month extension after numerous extensions prior. I think uh I'm gonna, I'm gonna look to rescind the bond, if that's the attitude. Thank you.
All right, um Bob, did Alright, um, Bob, did you want to make a motion?
Um, yeah, I was, I thought Jim was just making a motion.
Oh, well, uh.
No, no.
Want to make that?
You don't want to make that motion, Jim?
No, no, I'm just, uh.
Well, then I'll, I'll make a motion to extend the completion date, uh, till June thirtieth.
Okay, there's a motion.
I'll second that, but with, with the discussion that, that's it, you know, and that, when I, that's it.
Yep.
Alright, there's a motion.
We can put that at the end of the motion too, that's it.
Alright, there's a motion by Bob for one final extension to June thirtieth. Twenty twenty-three, no further continuances should be expected. That's the motion and that was seconded by Mike, is there further discussion on the motion? Alright, hearing no further discussion, I would ask for a roll call vote, please.
Bob Doherty.
Aye.
Jim Callahan.
Nay.
Kevin Donovan.
Aye.
Dave Edmonds.
Nay.
Carolyn Turner.
Aye.
Mike Ventresca.
Aye.
And Chair Claudia Bogan.
Nay, so that is four in favor, three oppose, uh, three opposed, that motion carries. So we will see everyone again in six months and hopefully at that point, uh, it will be done at that point.
Thank you.
Alrighty, thank you. Alrighty, so on the agenda after these two items are planning board director update, Tina, what have we?
Uh, so just, uh, not much, just to let you know that our next scheduled board meeting is January tenth. Um, at, right at this moment, I don't know if, um. Don't know of any guaranteed item that will be on your agenda, but what we do have is interesting. Uh, I have the possibility, if the, um, timing could work. I would ask the board if it would be willing to host a public meeting. On a study that, a preliminary conceptual study, not even preliminary. Conceptual study that, uh, city engineer Jay Corey has been working on with a consultant. That would create a multi-purpose greenway. Following, uh, in part former railroad lines and in part the middle six canal route. Uh, to get, uh, through the city of Woburn. We've hired a consultant who's done, as I said, a conceptual study. Uh, we need someone to sponsor a public meeting, Jay actually has suggested the planning board. As the one board, as he said, that has the word plan in its name. Uh, thinking that as you look toward the future and knowing that the board is often interested in these kinds of things. He asked if you might be interested in being the sponsor, if I can arrange for, you know, the consultant to be available. For perhaps a virtual meeting on the tenth of January, I would love to line that up. We'd make sure to invite, let the city councillors and the recreation commission, the conservation commission. And anyone else that we can think of know, so we might have quite a few participants. Who would join the meeting to hear the presentation by the consultant and then maybe do some sort of a, you know, Q and A. For a period of time at the end, so I'd love to get your indication of your willingness to be the host and hostesses of that. If we could arrange it for the tenth, otherwise we have no agenda per se at the moment.
Other than elections.
Other than elections, I'm so sorry, can't forget that and I did, you are right.
No worries, um, I myself, as everyone probably knows, am a huge proponent of. Multi-use greenways and I would be more than happy to have the planning board involve itself in. Uh, such a wonderful potential project and if there is really nothing pressing on the tenth, then that seems to be a good. Time to do that, um, virtual meetings in January, given winter weather and such, strike me as an. Excellent idea to get public participation, so you know, all in all, it seems to, um, everything seems to be coming together for that. Um, to make a lot of sense, Tina.
Good, good, thank you. Anyone else?
Right.
Alright, so, everyone's good, alright, so then after that, was, was that it for planning board director update?
It was.
So the idea was, are we good with a virtual meeting on the tenth and are we good with a potential? Um, public meeting on a, uh, greenway project and it seems that we are, so. Absent anyone's input, that's what we're going to do, alright, uh, on the agenda, approval of minutes, November twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. Has everyone had a chance to look at them and if there are no, uh, changes, I'd certainly entertain a motion.
Make a motion to accept the, uh, November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two minutes as is.
Motion by Bob to accept the minutes as submitted, uh, second by Dave, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'd entertain a roll call vote, please.
Bob Doherty.
Aye.
Jim Callahan.
Aye.
Kevin Donovan.
Aye.
Dave Edmonds.
Aye.
Carolyn Turner.
Aye.
Mike Ventresca.
Aye.
Chair Claudia Bogan.
I, seven in favor, none opposed, that motion carries. Are there any other business matters that may legally come before the board not known at the time of posting, Tina?
Not from staff.
Alright, then, um, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. The final meeting of twenty twenty-two. I certainly, before we adjourn, wish everyone, um, a good holiday season and, um. Hope for a lovely twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the December thirteenth planning board meeting at, uh, seven thirty-seven, I think.
Alright, uh, motion to adjourn by Bob, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Carolyn, any further discussion, hearing none, I'd ask for a roll call vote, please, Karen.
Bob Doherty.
Aye.
Jim Callahan.
Aye.
Kevin Donovan.
Aye.
Dave Edmonds.
Aye.
Carolyn Turner.
Aye.
Mike Ventresca.
Aye.
And Chair Claudia Bogan.
Hi, that's seven in favor, none opposed, thank you very much, thank you to Karen and Tina for. Yet another well-run meeting and we will see each other again in the new year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great holiday, everybody.
Thank you.
Take care, everyone, have a good holiday.